Tonight is Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. The time is now 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/ler. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing (669) 900-6833. Enter ID 82306036797. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. We hereby call this regular meeting of the Madera City Council to order at 6:00 PM. Alicia, would you please call the role?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Sammy Neely of the Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church?
Let us bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for this blessed day that you have bestowed upon us, Lord. I ask you, Lord, that you guide our leaders, guide the city council, Lord, guide their steps and guide their decisions, Lord, so they may lead this city, Lord. And I pray for our city, Lord, and our school districts, our police departments, our fire departments, Lord, our education. I just want you to have your hand, your leading and guiding hand on them, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Madera Community College President Angel Reyna. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues regarding the agenda to move the special meeting to the end of our meeting, so we don't have any, we don't have any issues. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda besides that item? Are you seeing none? I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as well as the amended.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as well as moving the special meeting of the Madera City Council to the end of the meeting by Councilwoman Anita Evans, second by Councilmember Vegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We will now move on to presentations. We will now move on to presentations. Cheryl Berry and Mr. Dennis Hart, would you please approach the podium?
Welcome.
Thank you.
We will now present the Madera County Historical Society with a proclamation for their 50th anniversary of the opening of the Madera County Museum. Whereas on September 28th, 1974, the Benera County Museum opened its doors to the public with 10 rooms. And whereas since that time, the museum has grown to encompass 23 rooms across three floors, made possible through the continued support of volunteers, service clubs, and financial contribution, all of whom have worked diligently to maintain and expand the museum. Whereas over the past 50 years, the museum has served as a backdrop for a variety of community events and activities. And whereas, let this serve as a reminder of the museum's role in preserving our shared history, fostering community connections, and standing as a testament to the dedication and resilience of those who have cared for it throughout the decades. Now therefore be resolved that I, Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do honor and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the opening of the Madera County Museum. Signed as fourth day of September, 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you, council, for having us here tonight. We really appreciate the recognition. A lot of people have spent thousands of hours and dollars of their own money to help preserve the community's history from the beginning. We've just really worked hard over the years to keep it at what it is, and we welcome all of you to come join us on that 50th anniversary or sometime soon after that. And anybody that's willing to volunteer will take any volunteers that are able to come help us anytime. And I'd like to introduce Dennis Hart. He's been an instrumental member of our group for the last two and a half years, writing continuously about history of especially the mountain area. And then also he has a, he can explain what he's written here in the book that you have up before you.
We hope you find this book, we hope you find this book as interesting to read as we did to write. And there's a lot of information in here about how the courthouse was built in 1900, burned in 1906 on Christmas Eve, rebuilt, how the courthouse was almost torn down in the mid 1950s, as many of you know, because it was abandoned, it was too old, it was unsafe, almost a new city hall built between the courthouse and Gateway Drive, but not quite, didn't quite make it. And the Historical Society was founded on May 21st, 1955. It took 20 years for the museum to open. It's a long and winding journey, which is what the first chapter is called. And I think you're going to find it interesting. I know we did in writing it. Cheryl, Karen Elmore, our curator, and I wrote this, and we are proud of it, and we hope you are proud of the museum. Thank you so much for honoring us. Thank you. Bye bye.
Would you? I'm ready.
So excited for you guys.
Oh my God, this is so.
Dennis again, thank you for.
Ready, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. So much for supporting us. Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the, of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak under public comment?
Mr. Mayor, would it be okay if we also opened up the public comment for the special meeting at the same time?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time starts now? Okay. I didn't see you go on yet. Okay. How's it going, everyone? Mary Garcia, council and staff as well as the public. My name is Kyle Savage. I'm the field representative for Congressman John Duarte for Madera and Fresno County. Our office is proud to announce that Congressman John Duarte has endorsed a new law to improve access for late-stage breast cancer patients. Representative John Duarte worked with his colleagues on the Problem Solvers Caucus, which is a bipartisan group who find common ground on pressing issues and put the country above party politics. The proposal, which is HR 549, seeks to eliminate the waiting periods for advanced breast cancer patients with Medicare and Social Security Disability Insurance, or SSDI. That furthermore, Congressman Duarte issued this statement following the endorsement of HR 549. "Our valley's breast cancer patients face enough physical and mental challenges, and we must support them immediately," said Representative Duarte. "Delaying care even one day for our breast cancer patients is unacceptable. I, like most Americans, have seen this diagnosis destroy families, but have seen how beneficial rapid care can be for patients, families, friends, and our valley. Moving these unnecessary wait times is not an option for me. It's an obligation as a father, husband, community member, and your congressman." HR 549 has two main proposals that seek to better the medical access for patients battling for their lives that are to eliminate the five-month waiting period for SSDI coverage and to eliminate the 24-month period waiting for Medicare coverage. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Mayor, we did, we did receive a public comment, written public comment from DJ Becker. Two emails have been printed out. A copy has been distributed to council at the dais, and there are, there are copies available at the podium for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alicia. Do we have no further written or Zoom comments under public comment?
We have none.
Okay. And we will now close public comment. And we will now move on to the item B, the consent calendar. Matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Were you planning on doing item A after the consent calendar or before the consent calendar?
Let me get back over there. Ah, yeah. Here we go. Public hearings. Thank you very much. Let's blame it on the heat. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We will move back to item A, public hearings. Excuse me for that. Item A1 is a continued public hearing and consideration of Measure T, Annual Expenditure Plan, AEP, for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Keith, I'm sorry about that. Do you have this item?
I do have it. Thank you, Mayor. Everybody should be able to see my screen. I'll just go ahead and move into it.
Yes.
This is a continued public hearing for the Measure T Annual Expenditure Plan for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And let's see, page down, page down. There we go. This item was presented at the August 21st City Council meeting. The public hearing was open and continued to September 4th to allow for additional time for public feedback. A notice of public hearing was originally published in the Madera Tribune on July 27th, 2024. No comments have been received from the public as a result of the notification, the newspaper, the post of city council agenda, or as a result of the continuance. A little bit of background on the measure. It is a half-cent sales tax approved by voters in November 2006 for transportation purposes in Madera County only. Oversight is by the Madera County Transportation Authority, also known as the MCTA, and the measure sunsets in 2027. The Citizens Initiative to Renew Measure T is on the November ballot. I think that's about 62 or 63 days from now. The MCTA and MCTA Annual Work Program to be adopted at their September 18th meeting includes an annual expenditure plan submitted by each local agency. We will be submitting that after this particular meeting. The annual expenditure plan, there are $4,940,000 in allocation to the city for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The capital improvement plan and the city budget process identifies projects and programs for that Measure T funding, that new Measure T funding. Approval of the Measure T program requires a separate council action at a notice public hearing, that is tonight. This represents the, the programs that are associated with the Measure T. We have four major categories, regional transportation highway program, local transportation, of which there are multiple subcategories, transit enhancement program, and the environmental enhancement program. Starting off with the regional transportation highway program, there are five projects currently in that that are located on arterial and collector streets for the 2024, 25 fiscal year. You'll see a number of rehabilitation projects, plus the traffic study for Almond Avenue, and then preliminary engineering of the storm drain pipe that will be going, that we're proposing on Howard Road, and then a traffic signal at D and South Streets. For time beyond 2024, 2024 and 25, we have the Olive Avenue widening, Lake Street widening, Pine Street, Cleveland Avenue widening, and the Almond Avenue extension. This, this represents the capital projects for out beyond 24, 25. You'll see they're kind of spread out. The local transportation program, also known as LTP, that's for street maintenance. It has $870,000 transferred to the public works for street maintenance for various different activities. $1.7 million for city street rehabilitation, and those will be from projects generated from our pavement management system. You'll see a little bit more of that in just a few slides. For supplemental street maintenance, we have two projects, seals and overlays, and another R and R project, and then $100,000 transferred to the public works department for street maintenance. Second major category, ADA compliance, that includes SNOR sidewalks, ADA walkability, and Washington School sidewalks. Transit, overall, is $400,000 allocated for that portion. And then the environmental enhancement program, you'll see three projects at the tail end that overlap with the ADA improvements, and then three LE paving projects. Project selection for the planning and programming for road projects in the CIP. There are multiple funding sources, of course, and we need to coordinate those planned underground with underground utility projects. Those utility projects, we need to be thoughtful of those because those can sometimes cost almost as much or a good portion of a project just for paving. And then work with engineering and public works to maintain lists of candidate projects in addition to recommendations from the pavement management system based upon the pavement condition index. With the projects that we have shown here, 79, 80, 81, 98, 99, and 104, Measure T represents about 46% of those projects. It's a significant portion of them, and these are, these are roadway rehabilitation project, projects. You'll see that we have about $5.225 million for Measure T, and that is about $46 million of the total cost of those projects, as we have them estimated at the moment. And these are the street construction projects shown again throughout the city. And once, go ahead and note that R00099 has $2.4 million, and there are no specific projects on those. Those will be rolling out of the, of the pavement management system when we finally complete that. As part of the project pavement management plan, the plan is a strategic method for assessing, planning, and scheduling road maintenance to ensure optimal performance and longevity. It takes into account a decision tree of treatments based upon the pavement condition index, PCI, the functional classification, and funding availability. Put those three together, and you start to come up with a program that hopefully picks out projects that are the most efficient for the city in the long term. We may do a number of, of cheaper projects with the goal of not allowing those cheaper projects to become much more expensive as the roads deteriorate. Anyway, the plan recommends projects to achieve the identified goal. For example, an overall PCI of 65 in five years. I'll look at that, a little bit more of that here in just a second. And we will, we will be running the scenarios with and without renewal Measure T. We'll know here in just a short amount of time whether the Measure T program will be successful for this upcoming election. If, if, if it's not successful, that one, we still do have some time to make another run at it, but I'm feeling pretty confident about that, that being voted yes. The pavement condition index update itself. We first did one in 2016, and that was just for arterials and collectors. That report indicated that our pavement condition index at the time was, was 68. Not terribly bad, but not, not as good as we would like it to be. The current PCI of collectors and arterials has dropped down to 65. So with, with the amount of funds that we've been putting into rehabilitation projects, we still did see our condition drop by 65, or from 68 to 65. It's possible that that is a difference between methodologies from two different companies. It is possible that the roads overall did stay about the same. I just can't tell you for sure on that, which way it was. Our consultant drove every street and collected data and measured distresses such as potholes, cracking, rutting, and writability. They identified areas needing immediate repair and provided recommendations for maintenance and rehabilitation. Now, this is a summary coming from the data for the, for the pavement management program that we've got right now. And it includes the original arterials and collectors. The arterials have 66 PCI, collectors 64, and the residential local is down there at 57, averaging out to about 61. So our goal is 65. It's something we want to go ahead and hit. The residential local streets probably haven't been getting as much love as they should, so over time, hopefully, we're going to be able to go ahead and change that and, and bring up that PCI. The final of the draft of the pavement management plan is, in fact, due this month. We look forward to go ahead and seeing that in its final form. The PMP will generate the next several years of pavement management projects. As an example, the R000099. With that, we have a recommendation that council receive as, that council will receive as part of the public hearing, listen to the public, and use that as part of the decision, and then adopt the resolution approving the Measure T Annual Expenditure Plan for 2024, 25. That's Exhibit A to the resolution, authorizing submission of projects to the Madera County Transportation Authority, MCTA. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Keith. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on item A1, the Measure T, Measure T item? Seeing none? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom participants wanting to comment on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now close, close the public comment on this item and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if there is no discussion, I'll move to approve item A1.
Second.
Motion to approve item A1 by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilmember Vegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith. Thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar, item B this time. We did read the, the statement regarding the matters listed on the consent calendar, so we will go to any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar, and if there's none, I'll bring it back to my colleagues.
Pardon me, Mayor. I, I need to announce a recusal on this particular item.
Okay.
This is with regards to me. On item B10, as you know, I'm also the general counsel for the MCTC. I've not been involved in this agreement for either party, but out of an abundance of caution and for transparency, I'm going to be recusing myself for item B10. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Alicia, none on Zoom or on emails?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
We'll close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for discussion or a motion?
I so move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Mayor Protem Gallegos, second by Councilwoman Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we can bring you back, Shannon. We now move on to item C, workshop. Item C1 is the Madera Community College Agave Distillery Program. This presentation is by Madera Community College President Angel Reyna. Welcome, Angel.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, members of the city council. Appreciate your commitment to serve the community and, more importantly, to support the college as well. I'd like to give thanks to Arnaldo as well for coming to meet with me at the college and having a great discussion about some of the work we're doing at the college. I shared with him some of the work we're, we're doing in regards to a vision to start an agave distillery program at the college. We've been researching this for close to two years, looking at options that make sense not only for the city but for the county, for less water-intensive crops, which agave happens to be part of, and also taking a holistic approach that we want to provide not only an economic boom to the city but to the county by trying to make Madera County the hub of agave distillery, not only in the region, the state, and hopefully the nation. We've, we've secured a site where we can begin to start the distilling process and research process and educational process, hopefully by sometime in January or February. One of the things that I shared with Arnaldo as well is we're starting to plant some agave plants on the campus, and that started yesterday. So we're starting to move forward on this path, and the ultimate goal for us is to have a distillery with a hotel, bar, and restaurant that the college runs to educate our students because of the Oakhurst campus. There's a lot of hospitality and tourism, but more importantly, as I mentioned, it's less water-intensive, and so we have a lot of farmers in the area that are very interested in the work that we're doing. I've engaged with some of them as well and gone to Mexico about four times now, working with some of the universities, some of the tequila folks as well, and more importantly, some research institute in Mexico that has been researching agave for a very long time, and we're coordinating with them to bring them to Madera Community College. And we just locked in the date a bit ago, November 19th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. More information is forthcoming to educate the farmers and anybody interested in beginning to plant agave in Madera County, obviously for the benefit of, of a less water-intensive crop, which we know is needed in the valley. But I'll take any questions, and obviously before you is a letter to support this work that we have in front of us, because the ultimate goal is going to take a lot of support, but we have a temporary site where we continue, where we could start the work, and we've been working with UC Merced because we want to create. been working with UC Merced because we want to create a full path for our students to not only start with us but complete with UC Merced.
Thank you, President. Are there any members of the public wishing to ask any questions regarding the agave program of Mr. Reyna? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to my colleagues if you have any questions, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. President Reyna, thanks again for the presentation. Do you have a name of your distillery yet, anything coming out, or is this just in the infant stages, just trying to get this rolled out?
It's in the impetus stages. We're actually working with some folks from Mexico and inviting them to come to our campus October tenth to form a committee of both universities, tequila folks that are interested to help us map this out intentionally, but for now, we want to begin the process of education and instruction. Obviously, we can't call it tequila, but we're batting around maybe an agave innovation center, but we haven't finalized on a name yet.
And last question, as you said, it's less water-intensive crop. In comparison to what we have here in our county and our region, would you say that the water use for this particular crop, is there a percentage as far as water use?
Yeah, I don't know in comparison to like almonds, et cetera, that I have to leave that to another expert. I just know you don't have to water it as much, and part of the educational piece will be when our colleagues that we've been working with in Mexico are going to come and educate us on some of those pieces like the varieties of agave, the soil type, et cetera, how to maintain it, and that's I'm still in that learning process in comparison to some of that because I'm not a farmer by trade, so I don't know the water. I just know that it's a lot less intensive.
Good, good. I'm sure the region may be apt for that particular crop, meaning that, you know, agave seems to grow and there's it's kind of drought tolerant, and I'm sure it does well. So good, good for you and good for the community. More importantly, good for the state center. Look forward to seeing that happen.
And I think also it'll be an economic, social, and cultural boon because for folks that have never experienced kind of because the overall vision is to try to have this be the the agave route that's similar to the tequila route in Mexico, and that's the plan that we're working towards with this committee that's coming to help inform that.
Now, is this Madera Community College only, or is this kind of expand to the state center at all?
Madera Community College only right now. Because we want to keep this work in Madera County.
Awesome. Thank you.
And the economic impact and the cultural impact here in Madera.
Nice, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Dr. Reyna, I just want to thank you for championing something out of the box and bringing it here to our community members and our students in the valley. And not just that, mirroring it and being a partner with UC Merced is so amazing. We have a lot of our young people already there that can champion brothers and sisters that are moving up the line that would want to go into that pathway. So my comment is just kudos to you. I know it's it's been a long road to just kind of start to champion it, and the time that you put in to go back and forth to Mexico to try to get more partners to get on board with you. So you have my support as a council member and my colleagues, and if you need anything from my from me, you've got it.
Thank you. I appreciate that because there are still obstacles ahead as it's a very new program, and so there's some legislative pieces that we're working on to to address because most of the head code is around brewing and viticulture but not distilling. We'd be the first ones entering.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Mejia.
Thank you, Dr. Reyna, for the presentation. I'm just curious if mezcal has also been considered.
Yes, and I and that's something that we're working on as well because ultimately we can't even call it mezcal either, but it's it's made from the same plant, right, the Tequillina Weber Azul, and that's what we're we're working on planting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, thank you, thank you, sir. Dr. Reyna, I just would like to say I echo my colleagues, and if anything that you need from me or even them, just just let us know. And when you start the work, it would be so nice to be able to come out and just tour the plant and see how everything is running and what all you guys are doing there. But thank you so very much for the presentation, and thank you for bringing this to the city of Madera.
Yeah, thank you, and most definitely, when we get up and running, we'll make sure and invite all of you to come and check it out. I know that ever since I've started talking to folks about this, they're like, well, I'll be a taster. Everybody's scared, but we'll all get in line. And obviously, there's a lot of different products you can make from agave. You can make the honey. Folks have been making labels to put on the bottles, even some clothes, you know, composting. There's a lot of different things that we've learned through the process that people have been diversifying. When we went and visited a tequila plant, they were using they were making prebiotic powder out of the agave too, so there's a lot of different uses for it. And so we're looking forward to the research side and collaborating with UC Merced and other four-year partners that might be interested because there's a lot of, you know, there's differences between the soil in Mexico and here, the water, et cetera. When it rains, it doesn't, et cetera. So there's a lot of research still ahead of us that I think gets exciting.
Councilmember Montes.
Yeah, I'm also going to echo whatever everybody else says. This is pretty cool, innovative program that you're trying to start. First, I want to know, how do I sign up to be a tester? You skipped over that part.
What a signup sheet here.
Right outside. But with the Sigma evaluation periods upon us, is that something that there are implications there? I know you talked about this as a less water-intense crop. Have there been any like funding opportunities that have come out of Sigma or maybe some other, you know, instruments that would help that? Is that something that you're looking at as well? And I'm just off the top of my head.
You're saying funding opportunities?
Yeah, like safer grants. I know that's not necessarily in that wheelhouse, but they, you know, help to reduce the use of water. Is that something that you're looking into, or what are the implications there?
Yeah, so I've started a lot of conversations with USDA because of the agricultural piece to see how they can support. I think as their continued support comes from the county, the city, and other entities within the city and the county, which we're starting to get thanks to Arnaldo and his contacts, he's been out there pounding the pavement for me, so thank you, Arnaldo, for that, and we appreciate the support. I think it's going to make it easier for us to access funding to support this work because it will take we have some startup dollars that we can use through the Strong Workforce Program, but ultimately, we will need more resources for the longer vision that will be, you know, in the millions of dollars, right? If when we get to that point, hopefully, I'd like to get there sooner than later, but I'm also patient and knowing we'll get there.
Well, thank you for all your work you do out there at the college and for this program.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Viejas.
Thank you, Mayor. Angel, I heard some news a couple of years ago in Tulare County in the south. There were some farmers that were that were saying they will that we're going to do the same thing you're planning to do. So I guess you're not the only one in the valley, right? Know anything about some of the others?
Yeah, so there's people that have been planting agave for decades in California. There has been no formal education process to do any of it. We're the only ones, the only we did some research, the only place that was distilling agave was somewhere in Texas, but they were doing it out of concentrate, and we're not going to do concentrate, we're going to do the pina and do the plant. We haven't found anywhere in the whole West Coast, probably in the nation that is attempting to do that. People have been planting, you know, I have one at home. I think we all have them like around. I was kidding, but there are some farmers that are planting lots and lot of acres, and even here locally in Madera County, Kevin Herman has planted ten acres, and he took me out there, and he's been one of the supporters and other folks as well. And and part of the plan with the overall vision is to create, and within the space, it's an incubation space, because not everybody's going to be able to afford the equipment, and we want to build small businesses because of the community that we serve. And so that's part of the vision, too, is to create somebody to come in maybe for like six weeks and do their thing or a semester, whatever it may be, and have so we're going to do small business development within the college to uplift our community, because there may be some great folks that do some great distilling that can't afford the equipment, and we want to remove that barrier as part of the vision.
All right. Thank you. This has been an informational piece, item C one. Angel, I want to thank you for coming and educating us a little bit on the issue. Good luck to you and your project, and in the future, as you've heard my colleagues say, if we get anything we can do to help you, we will be doing it.
Yeah, thank you. Gracias.
Under item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements, we have no issues today. Under item E, we move on to item E, administrative reports. Item E one is a selection of recipients for the proclamations in the month of October. Alicia, you must have the sign.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Alicia Gonzalez, City Clerk. We are all familiar with this item. Bring it back to you for the month of October. It's to select recipients for the proclamations in the month of October. Council adopted a policy governing ceremonial document guidelines on August second, two thousand and twenty-three, and in December of two thousand and twenty-three, council approved the two thousand and twenty-four list of annual proclamations. Council also discussed and approved certain proclamations would be labeled as recipient at the discretion of council. Per council's direction, last December, staff is requesting that council select a recipient for the proclamation recognizing breast cancer awareness month and for the proclamation recognizing domestic violence awareness month. Here you'll see a list of the annual proclamations. Down at the bottom for October is breast cancer awareness month. There there's a total of four proclamations for the month, but the two we are seeking recipients for are breast cancer awareness month and domestic violence awareness month. I will now turn it back over to council considerations.
I'm sorry, Alicia, are there any members of the public? Could you put that screen back up, please?
Sure.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak under the selection of recipients item? Nothing under Zoom or written comments? Alicia? We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for comments and/or a motion.
It's you first.
Is that you first?
Okay, Councilmember Montes. So for domestic violence awareness month, I wanted to have the recipient be CAPMC, victim services. That's from one of the boards that we have an appointee for, and they provide great services for the community, and they've been the recipient in the past.
Councilwoman Evans.
As far as the breast cancer awareness recipient, are we asking for individuals? Are we asking for a special organization, or how are you wanting to do that?
That's up to that's up the consideration of council. That's council's decision.
Well, I have a recipient that I know of, and I would like to name her. Her name is Caroline Harrow. She's a breast cancer survivor, and that's one that I would like to recommend.
Well, those are the two nominations, one for the domestic violence month, CAPMC, and for breast cancer awareness month, Caroline, what was her last name?
Harrow, H A R R O W.
Harrow. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve both recipients, yes.
Your second?
I second.
Motion to approve the naming of the both items by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Mejia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, aye. Thank you very much, Alicia. Item E two is an update on the city sidewalk replacement program. Presentation by Ismael. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Let me let me share my screen. Right, so Mayor and council, this item is an informational update on the city sidewalk replacement program. The city received six hundred nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars in community development block grant funds to replace sidewalks in low-income neighborhoods, and this was in late two thousand and twenty-two, early two thousand and twenty-three, just it was it was before I started with the city of Madera. HUD, who oversees the community development block grant program, defines low income by census tract, so there are specific neighborhoods in the city that that qualify to receive work under this program. This update tonight includes the period from February two thousand and twenty-three through August of two thousand and twenty-four. The city initially went out to bid but determined it was more cost-effective and more beneficial to have city staff do the work. While the grant provides six hundred nine thousand dollars, this is woefully short of the needed amount. Staff focuses on areas where pedestrian traffic appears heaviest, such as major roads and routes to schools. And another thing about this grant is that it's specific to the replacement of existing sidewalks. It will not fund new sidewalks where gaps may exist. So it's very particular. Anecdotally, the staff has received positive feedback. We've received feedback from many residents and businesses around town as we've gone into different neighborhoods. This chart here shows how much work has been devoted to this program. You can see on the left column, the period from February two thousand and twenty-three when we started to June two thousand and twenty-three, we expended one thousand forty-seven man-hours, replaced one thousand five hundred and thirty-six linear feet of sidewalk, and total funds expended was fifty-five thousand three hundred and seven dollars. That includes labor and material. And and as you go through, you can see the next three months, this is we have to submit quarterly reports to CDBG, so that's how we have this broken down. The last period, July to August, is we don't have the funds expended because those invoices are still being brought in, but we have expended two hundred and fifteen hours and nine hundred and sixty linear feet replaced for a total, since this program's been started, of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-one linear feet. So divide that by three hundred, and you see how many football field lengths that have been replaced. It's 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 quite a bit of sidewalk. I'm doing the calculation right now, just to forty-two football fields in length have been of sidewalk that has been replaced. Moving forward, so one thing about this this program, as I mentioned, it's very specific to neighborhoods, and it only replaces existing lifted sidewalks. This program will continue to focus on those areas, but in our current budget, we allocated one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to expand this effort into non-low-income neighborhoods and also to give us the flexibility of adding, doing some sidewalk infill projects where we where we find them as time goes on. These monies can also be used for sidewalk shaving, again, and replacement projects in areas that don't qualify for the CDBG funding. We anticipate to reapply for additional funding in the CDBG fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to continue the program, considering the fact that a lot of work remains. It seems like the more we do, it's almost as if the sidewalk trip hazards are multiplying out there. But but the benefit has been great. We've gotten a lot of work done. We've been able to do it with with staff. It's given us some flexibility, so it's been a really great program, and we're very happy to So it's been a really great program and we're very happy to be able to expand that with $150,000. This is the last slide here, and then I just have something to talk about really quickly about the future. On the left, this is our staff doing work here in the sidewalk replacement program. And on the right is a picture that, that I have had since May 6, 2016. At my last job, we started a sidewalk replacement program. And that picture there was, was our first location. It was a pilot project. And once the concrete was dried and we removed the barricades and the caution tape and opened it up to the public, that, that that woman crossing the sidewalk there with her walker and her little ducks and was the first pedestrian to, to cross that sidewalk. And she told us that she had been retired for over 20 years and for 20 years went for a walk just about every day. And every day had to walk through this sidewalk that had three mulberry trees lifting the sidewalk up. The worst lift was over nine inches and, and the best lift there was over five inches. And she thanked our staff for, for replacing that sidewalk for her. And you know, the city, all cities, but the city of Madera is works really hard to make this community a better place. We've got multimillion dollars in capital improvement projects going on. But sometimes even the little, the little projects like this, they have far reaching benefits for, for members of our community. So that's our update. If we have any questions from council, I'd be glad to answer. I believe Arnaldo and I have talked about bringing, bringing this back to council to discuss priorities at a later date. And at that time, we can show you on a map where the CDBG areas are that can be funded with that program and, and kind of give you an idea of what we, how much work is, is, remains.
Thank you, Ismael. Do we have any members of the public wishing to make, make comments on item E two? Any written or Zoom?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. I just want to start off with saying that in our disadvantaged communities, which we have a significant part of in, in Madera. Traditionally, we've been that way because of neglect from past, from the past. We have a lot of folks who their partner will take their only vehicle to go to work and they're gone all day, and that leaves the remaining partner with children. Yes, sir?
I think your mic went out, Mayor.
Is that?
There we go.
Is that better? I'm not going to start over again. I just want to say that the, the community is in desperate need of those sidewalks being taken care of. There are women taking their children to school to and from after they drop off all their siblings. And they're walking through mud on the rainy days, or they're walking down the street competing with cars. And it's hot out there and they're struggling to push those strollers. I'm sure that that woman that was on the, on the picture there, when she said those words, it touched me because I see that every day still in our community. There's a large part of our community where I live where we don't have sidewalks. And those, those folks do have to go walk on the street when there's dusty or there's rain in the winter months. And so thank God that we are, we're beginning this project of rehabilitating our sidewalks. And I, I believe it's money well spent and I see it every day. And I congratulate our staff for doing everything they do. We see them out there working on those sidewalks and repairing those sidewalks. And I, I see what you're doing and I, and I thank you for it. And I just, I just basically wanted to say that. Councilmember Mejia?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Hernandez. You mentioned that they, the repairs are made, made based on what appears to be the most need. Appears to, who is that? To public work staff, to city staff or to who?
I think your microphone's off, Ismael.
Mute.
Sorry about that. I'm having trouble getting my screen up. I kept pushing the button. Nothing was happening. So the answer to that question is there's multiple sources. We have a CDBG, a map that was approved for this program that we received or that was, was part of the original application for the funding. And our staff has, has focused inside those neighborhoods. So they have already eliminated the biggest offenders, if you will. And now they're going on to, you know, for example, if the worst offender was a lift that was nine inches, 10 inches because of a large tree root lifting it. Now they're focusing on some that are a little less than that. We also, we receive reports on a regular basis, two, three times a week from residents or, or council members about a sidewalk issue. If that particular report is in a CDBG area, then, then, then we prioritize that. Since, since a report came in, we make that a priority. So, so it's kind of a combination. I've had some council members mention areas that, that thank God were in this area. We could be refunded by this program. There's been ADA commission members that have given me addresses that were in areas that qualify for this program. And again, like I said, residents and other city staff as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I had, I had the same question about people submitting requests because a lot of times residents will reach out to the council members. And I did want to simply give you a shout out, Director. I submitted something through the portal online that the public can use. And I want to say within about two days, your team was out there making the repairs. So I do really appreciate, and I think, I don't know if that's something that we could promote. I know it's, it's on the website, right? How, you know, how do I submit? But I mean, if, if the community wants to reach out, I always give council member Gallegos information. So any complaints can go to her, anything good, go to me. I'm just saying. But no, I do really appreciate your staff, like not, I mean, it didn't come, like it wasn't a council member request. It went through the portal that the public uses and your team was able to get it and get it processed very fast, not knowing that it was coming from me. So I do appreciate your team and all the work you guys do.
Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so very much. And Ismael, thank you also for, for your report. And I want to echo as well the number of individuals in District Four. We don't have a lot of sidewalks. And a number of my students from James Monroe have contacted me. And I've also spoken to Arnaldo and different individuals in reference to the fact that the mommies walk to school with their babies and the babies are in the streets. They have been splashed. There have been times that there were no sidewalks. So in the repairs, I, I thank you so very much. And I hope that we may be able to have more sidewalks to be laid. And I know this project is not for that. But in the future, it would be so nice to be able to create more sidewalks, especially on Adele Street, which has not been, had not been paved and now it is. So that sidewalk there on Adele Street could still use a little bit more, you know, tender loving care. But I just want to say thank you very much for your report and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your words. I appreciate it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Gracias, Ismael, for all the work that you do. Convey that to your staff. And of course, Arnaldo directing as always.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We'll close item E two. We will now move on to item F, future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved to initiate new matters and to request updates and to initiate new agenda items. No single item may exceed one minute. All votes will be conducted electronically with the results announced by the chair. If not, if voting is not available by electronic methods, another method may be used by the chair unless otherwise determined by a majority of the council members present. Under the sec, under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Do we have any members? Nope, we're seeing none. Okay, we'll close that item. We will now move on to item G, council member communications, reports and announcements. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events and to make announcement. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Just a few things. The first thing I want to commend our water department. I know we're going back to triple digits and when the heat rises, we do get quite a few water leaks in the city. And I know our water department is trying to get to them as soon as possible. So if our residents can just be patient, we know water is leaking out of that street, but we are getting to them as fast as we can. So I think our employees out there working hard, even though it's, it's really hot out there, they probably feel refreshed getting into that hole and digging that tube out in the water. The second thing is, again, triple digits, we have Madera District Fair starting on Thursday. So everybody try to make it to the fair Thursday, Friday, Saturday or Sunday. Maybe a little later when it gets, cools down. Just slow down on those roads, schools in, kids are walking, parents. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I wanted to continue my shout out to staff. I felt like I went on a little bit of a tear this last, this last meeting, just submitting some stuff. And again, submitting it through the portal. So staff doesn't know that it's me submitting until they open their request, but they are opening them up in a timely manner. My responses that I got were ranging from a couple of minutes to a couple of days. And action was taken. So I do appreciate sending stuff to code enforcements and stuff to public works and stuff to PD and then graffiti abatement. So I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody does. And again, it's not because council members calling and asking, because I, I submitted everything to the way a regular community member would spend, and that's really appreciated by myself and I know the community. So thank you for all the work that you guys put in. Really appreciate you guys.
Councilwoman Evans?
I just want to say thank you to, to the staff, to the, to the council and to the city of Madera, to each one of you for, for all your hard work. And I know there's things that go on, especially with the homeless community. And I just want to say thank you very much for the things that you do, especially on the river. So be blessed to each and every one of you. Go home safely tonight and that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Mejia?
Thank you, Mayor. Next Tuesday, September 17, there's going to be a public forum at the Madera Community College. It's, the forum's going to talk about fake news, truth and your vote. So discerning misinformation during election time. That's from 6 to 8 PM. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Councilmember Vegas?
Oh, nothing to report.
As far as myself, I want to thank Madera Community Hospital CEO Steve Sark for inviting myself and city manager Arnaldo Rodriguez to visit the hospital to give us an update and give us a tour of the facility. There's a lot of good things going on out there. There's some major reconstruction and remodeling being done at the hospital. They did inform us that they were going to open up their portal for hiring. And there is a website for the Madera Community Hospital where they're beginning taking applications for staff, which is very exciting because anytime you're taking applications for staff, they're anticipating opening up. We're not really sure about an opening date as of yet. But I, I see them, when we went and took the tour, Arnaldo and I, we got to see their certification process for the machinery. Every piece of equipment has to be certified to, to, to these standards. And so they were taking apart machines and checking them and, and making sure that they were going to be usable for the near future. And so as far as I am concerned, good things are going to be happening at the Madera Community Hospital. We wish them all the luck. We need them to be successful for our community. We need healthcare and we need a hospital. And so I wish them all the luck in the world. And by the look of things, Mr. Stark and their staff are moving toward that goal. And we promised them that anything that we can do as a city, we would try to do. So we look forward to Madera Community Hospital opening in the near future. That's all I have today.
I want to thank everyone for attending. Shannon, would you please take us to closed session?
Certainly for the special meeting closed session, we have one item. This conference of labor negotiators presented to government code section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Arnaldo Rodriguez, Michael Lima and Wendy Silva. The employee organizations are Madera Police Officers Association. And when you adjourn into closed session for the special meeting, would you also adjourn the regular meeting as well? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
From our closed session, Shannon, could you bring us back from closed session?
So I hereby reconvene our city council meeting. We are back from closed session. It is now 7:30. Shannon, would you bring us back?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action in closed session. And just for the record, the council members present are Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Montes, Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Viegas. Thank you. Oh, and Councilmember Gagoz. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned at 7:35. I want to thank everyone here for your attendance. Our next city council meetings are September 18th and October 2nd. Thank you very much and have a good night.